Good evening. I now call to order the September 15th, 2025, the meeting of the PCOSIM Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Armentraut?
President.
Commissioner Peterson?
President.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Present.
Commissioner Hartley?
Present.
Commissioner Jaeger?
Present.
Vice Chairman Geisinger?
Present.
Chairwoman Schott?
Present.
The quorum is present. Thank you. If you're able, please rise for an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Let us pray. Lord, guide this gathering with understanding and goodwill. Help us speak with compassion, listen with patience, and work together in unity to serve our community well. May this meeting reflect our shared hope for the future. Amen. Mr. Hartley, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to see all of you who are in attendance and like to welcome those who are also viewing us on the cable channel. So we're happy that you're all here. Before we begin, I know there's been a lot of conversation recently about the north side of Victory Boulevard. And what I'd like to start off with are some facts that you may not know and what we're talking about to maybe help with this process. There is no current submission plan nor a proposal for any mixed-use development for the north side of Victory Boulevard. City Council eliminated the code language that would allow people to submit a planned unit development, mixed-use community, similar to the Legacy Project. Any submission right now for multifamily would have to be done by conditional use permit or rezoning, both of which will require a public hearing and city council approval. City Council has already adopted language requiring increased and enhanced buffers for basically anything that is to be developed on that side of the roadway. Tonight's Planning Commission has to do with merely comprehensive plan ordinance. It is not a zoning ordinance or any action taken tonight. The comprehensive plan is a plan for the physical development of the north side of Victory Boulevard showing long-range proposals for the general development of the area, which may or may not ever happen. It is a guidance document. It's not regulatory. It can be changed. The city only owns one parcel on that side, and it isn't even a half acre. The city only owns .336 of 210 acres. That is .16% of the total undeveloped land. The vast majority, approximately 200 acres, is privately owned. The EDA owns just over 10 acres, nine of which we all know is the field. The almost half of it is that R1 residential, 97 of 210 acres, has been zoned residential for decades. Someone could submit a plan tomorrow for single-family residences, just like they have the right to have done for generations. City Council this year adopted language to require increased open space and larger lot sizes for planned open space development. These are projects such as Bull Run Manor, Quarter Creek, Valmore Manor, and With Creek Estates. Any development of the commercially-zoned properties, or likely any new access to Victory Boulevard, will require a traffic impact analysis. We appreciate you coming out this evening, and I wanted to make sure that you are aware that this is an opportunity for you to share your comments with us. But during the meeting, we will keep track of your questions and ask staff to respond once the public input has been received, all speakers. I appreciate the emails that have also been submitted to Planning Commission. We're here to get your viewpoint and feedback and to be openly transparent in this process. That's something I pride myself on as the chairwoman of Planning Commission. Now with that being said, we again welcome community members tonight, and we are going to move into item number C of our agenda, which is the approval of minutes. And Crystal, you have been quite busy. We have three sets of minutes this evening. We have the work session of July the 21st, the regular session of July the 21st, and the work session of August 18th. Does anyone have any changes or comments to these minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the work session on July the 21st?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from July 21st.
We have a second.
A second, now.
May I have a roll call, please?
Sure.
Commissioner Armentraut?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley?
Aye.
Commissioner Jaeger?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Geisinger?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schott?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Now we're going to take a look at our regular session minutes from July the 21st. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move that we approve the regular session minutes from July 21st.
Do I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Armentraut?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley?
Aye.
Commissioner Jaeger?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Geisinger?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schott?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. And now finally, the regular session for August the 18th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the session minutes of August 18th.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Armentraut?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Ustain.
Commissioner Hartley?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley?
Aye.
Commissioner Jaeger?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Geisinger?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schott?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. We're going to move to item number F. This is Audience for Visitors. Now I know many of you here are to talk about the north side of Victory Boulevard, and if you are here to speak on that, currently I have two people signed up to speak. I would ask that you hold your comments until after the presentation, but if you have any other item that you wish to speak on tonight, feel free to come up, state your name and address, and we'd be happy to hear from you. Seeing none, I'm going to close.
My apologies. I was just trying to talk about probably like to speak to the Big Woods project.
Okay.
And she needs to just hold comments until the end.
That's correct. And...
There's a form that I believe I need to share.
Yes, there sure is. She has it right there for you. Thank you for doing that.
Sorry to put you in the way.
No, I appreciate you checking. I'm going to close the audience for visitors at this time, and we are going to move into the staff presentation under item number E. Mr. Horton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to try to be mindful of everybody's time tonight, but I did want to cover the memo, which really just sums up where we are right now. We talked about the Big Woods East, about maybe having some future divisions of that area, Big Woods East and West as currently in our comp plan. And of course, we're including the R1 zoned areas now for the first time. So we've decided last month that we would call it Big Woods North Residential, which is the R1 area, and Big Woods North Commercial, which is currently the research and development and general commercial areas of the, well, of the area. Development styles should be cohesively planned, and this was all the way back to the June work session that we had in the Public Safety Building. The development style should be cohesively planned, more through like a master plan, master plan community than piecemeal development. This may require joint effort by all stakeholders, meaning the city, the Economic Development Authority, and of course, the numerous property owners in the area. Three and four I sort of broke down separately. I wanted to address the traffic to the R1 areas. What we would prefer, or, you know, everything in the comp plan is pretty much worded "should," but should be accessed off of existing area, either off of Yorktown Road or off of Oakmore Road. Now, we know that there are some environmental concerns up there, and those will of course have to be taken into account, but we would prefer to do that rather than what is number four, is where if you've got a land-like piece of property in R1, you would be able to build a public street off of Victory as long as that was the only thing happening on that property. We would want that property to be in the ownership of the development at the time of application, be limited to the public street, as I said, be focused towards existing intersections, and I put those intersections in there. City Hall Avenue, Legacy Boulevard, and Big Woods Drive. I will point out for everybody's information that the only signalized intersection is at Legacy Boulevard right now. And of course, we'd require a traffic impact analysis for review, and that's basically unchanged. Anything that crosses GC and R and D now requires a traffic impact analysis. The research and development district in the Big Woods commercial area should be re-designated in favor of general commercial in the comprehensive plan, future land use map. We talked in terms of zoning last time. That's really not proper because we talked about the comp plan. So again, regulatory, not regulatory guidance. And at this point, I wanted to show the PowerPoint, which is very brief, but might be useful. Well, Thomas is working on it still apparently, but that's okay. We got it handled. This is actually the future land use map in the comprehensive plan. It is in there, and I did zoom in a little bit to the area in question, and I wish my pointer was working, but it's not. But you can see where the general commercial and the research and development working from right to left is going on the bottom, and the R1 zoned properties up on the top. Now, that cross-hatched area was area that was formerly the PUD mixed-use overlay district. As the chairwoman pointed out earlier, that has been eliminated. So...
Wally, when did we, when did City Council eliminate that?
I believe that was back in April.
In April. So that was removed from that at that time. Thank you for that.
Sure. I'll be happy to take any questions anybody has.
You have the mic. What was I hearing?
Okay. Well, I'm sorry. I'm talking into the mic enough. Try not to lean over too much.
Can you explain a little more the PowerPoint page about the road connectivity and how that...
So, so this is not going to be a question and answer thing? If you have a specific question, we will jot that down and then ask staff, just for clarity, to answer all at the one time?
That's all right.
That's okay. It's all good. We appreciate that. No, I, what, just let me know what your question is. We'll jot it down. And then for, you know, for everybody's time, some people have small children. I just want to be respectful of that. So, right. Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Wally.
Thank you.
And we're going to start off with our speaker cards for Audience for Visitors. And the first speaker that we have tonight is Mr. Harold Quinn. Mr. Quinn?
Thank you for the time to talk with you all related to this development plan. One of the things that I saw as I was going through this, and I have several questions, but I want to start with your work session, because part of what it specified was consulting property owners on the proposed master plan design and revisiting the data language for clarity and precision. I'm hoping that the residents of Oakmore will be enabled to hear that, because I feel like what usually happens, you talk with the person who was developing it, but the people who are going to be affected by it usually are not seen or heard of until it was too late. So I would recommend that the residents of Oakmore do have a chance to talk as it's being developed. And I state that for the following reasons. There are several pieces of wetlands in that area. I don't know how much, but one of the things that we've already heard is there are ways to get around overlaying the wetlands. The only way, I was on the wetlands board in the 70s. To set and do that, you have to take and mitigate property, and if you're not going to do that, I'm hoping that the city council and this group will not allow people to destroy wetlands without doing something to replace it. There is also a time when we looked at flooding in the area. Foxmore was awfully flooded all the time, and we were able to correct that. Once that occurred, once they started talking about developing the area around Oakmore, they were talking about 102 or 120 homes would be around there. I brought up the point at that time that wetlands, as well as drainage, is a big property issue. And they told me that they were going to take and move the drainage to across With Creek Boulevard, which made a lot of sense, as opposed to trying to run it down the other way. And that concerned me to a great advantage, especially with the fact that there's so much misinformation happening here. I've heard, as an example, that this is going to be another legacy on the north side. That concerned me only from the aspect that we're talking about having the actual roadways to take care of the residential coming down Oakmore Drive and some other place. Oakmore Drive has been a very quiet neighborhood forever, and I can't imagine another 200 homes being built and sending that traffic down that one issue, or creating a second line on Yorktown Road. My concern with that is the fact, we have Victory Boulevard, and why don't you go and move that traffic towards Victory Boulevard? That is to me the key, as well as I'm assuming that you would take and create Victory Boulevard into four lanes. And if anybody leaves here at 8:00 in the morning and sees the traffic that is there, you're going to know that we have a problem already that needs to be One of the things, I've talked about the drainage and the other issues here, but one of the key issues that I hope we can get into is the question I had, is I would like to be able to see what's going to happen, because I was on council for 12 years, and I know that whenever you have people who sit back and say, "It can't be done," they'll go to city council. And I've heard this because I was on city council. The planning commission said it, but don't worry about it because the city council can stop it. The city council relies very heavily on you and the city staff to define what needs to happen in the future. And I don't want to get into things like I used to hear where they would say, "Well, can't blame me. The city council passed it. The city council said we would have passed it if the commission had not approved it." And that, I guess, is what a lot of the people here are really concerned about. We would, you know, we'd like to keep that quiet neighborhood, and we'd make sure, we know things have got to develop, but we want to do it in a consistent way. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for raising this point. Ms. Conrad? Please let me know what the question was so we can make sure we capture that now that everybody can hear.
Forget, these are very strict procedural meetings. I appreciate the chance to speak to you all tonight. Good evening. I'm Christine Conrad, Wilson Drive. I just want to hit a few highlights. I've been following the meetings on YouTube and kind of reading the memos and what's going on here.
Thank you for doing that.
Sure. I just, I want to start out by saying that I actually fully support the vast majority of what you all are proposing to do. The redesignation of the R and D parcels into general commercial and the combining the Big Woods East and Big Woods West into a single planning unit seems to make very good sense. I agree with you all that a comprehensive, cohesive approach to development of that area is ideal. Some of you have called this area the gateway to our city and the gem of our city. I agree. You know, coming home from work at night, when you leave Yorktown Road and come into PCOSIM, it's like you've left the big city behind. Certainly would love for the woods to stay undeveloped, but that's not always realistic. So I understand development has to happen. I just want to see it done in a reasonable and responsible manner. So I appreciate your summary of the actions that the city has taken as far as increased buffers, landscaping, open space, tree safe areas. I think these are all things that should have been incorporated in some of the other developments that have occurred in the gateway to our city that unfortunately did not, and any future development along that corridor. I really hope that those are incorporated and taken seriously, and waivers are given on that sort of thing. Where I start to part ways with the proposed action is I don't fully understand why the residential section needs to be part of this amendment. I've not been able to find or have not heard, and I apologize if I've just missed it, a thorough discussion of alternatives from this commission and question and answers to Mr. Cannell and Mr. Horton as to what would that alternative look like without the residential portions included in this proposal? Does it hinder the general commercial development in any way? Does it hinder the residential development in any way? I've heard that the residential development would not change. None of the underlying zoning would change, though all of those rights that are there by right now would remain. They just seem to be two entirely different uses and entirely different purposes, even entirely different frontages. You know, the commercial is right there along Victory, whereas the proposed residential or the existing residential, excuse me, is further back off the road, likely many more environmental resources back there, closer to low-density existing development. So I think that's where most of my questions lie, is what is, what is the driving factor for putting the residential into this action? Can we not just go forward with the commercial and leave the residential as it is? And that plays into my earlier question, which I apologize again for the interruption, of just trying to understand what these stipulations are for and what purpose they are serving in the overall action. So really, a robust discussion of an alternative that doesn't include the residential, I would appreciate. And I just want to say thank you for hearing my comments. Appreciate your service to the community. Look forward to hearing more from you.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Can you, I would love you to address that. You read my mind.
Yeah, I can address that. The reason we put the R1 in with this, now of course, the planning commission may disagree, obviously, but the reason we put it in there is that we recognized that you could run a public street off of Victory to access properties, and you could do that under the current zoning ordinance now. You could run a new public street subject to a traffic impact analysis off of Victory into the R1 area, and you could basically make the R1 area much more developable in terms of subdivided lots or subdivisions, whether it's planned open space or your standard cookie cutter. So that's why we included it. I mean, we understand that there are some, some pretty sizable, you know, wetland and environmental impediments back there, but, but we felt like it needed to be at least considered because there is that potential that it would be tied. The area directly off of Victory Boulevard would become tied with the R1 in the rear, and that's why we did it.
So strictly for access really is what you're saying?
Access was the main driver, yes.
But that exists now. There's nothing hindering access from that.
No, we just thought we would tackle it in the comprehensive plan and try to leave some guidance that would, would maybe result in some better direction, you know, in the future. That's why we included it.
And so that...
Do you want to come up to the mic? I can't hear you.
And so, just so I'm clear, so if the R1 was not included, that doesn't affect the ability to combine the rest of the commercial, redesignate the R and D. It doesn't really change that portion of it at all, either?
No, it would not.
So it sounds like it's really just a convenience. There's no real, if we do this, we're going to totally destroy the ability to ever develop that area or just, you know, ruin these property owners.
No, I would actually say the R1 would be more developable without, you know, any sort of stipulations or, you know, of course, this is guidance document, but if we do stipulations on down the line, it would actually be more of a discouragement to development in R1. You know, to my mind, anyway.
May I ask one more question?
Sure.
I'll sit down.
Sure.
So with the current, with the changes that you noted, the council took with the elimination of the planning and mixed-use development, what safeguards are there or aren't there for ensuring that that R1 area remains a low resident, low-density residential?
Well, primarily, the major impediments right now will probably be the same as they'll be tomorrow, environmental impediments. But there are some access, there are some properties back there that are not as affected by wetlands and other things that would be impediments to develop. And, and for those properties, you know, if that property owner back there was to acquire property in the R and D or GC, wherever it might be, property, they could run a street off of Victory Boulevard to access that subdivision, and they would essentially get all their lots off of that street rather than accessing off of Yorktown or Oakwood, rather.
So will you all be stipulating in the amendment that the R1 would remain low-density residential?
Yeah, we're not proposing any change to that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oakmore, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Thomas, Wally, do you have, from the joint retreat with council, what some of the envisioned ideas were? You know, one prominent thing was the recreation-type facility for families or walking trails or senior housing, things of that, very low-density type things?
Doctors' offices were mentioned as well.
Right, doctors' offices were mentioned as well.
Thomas, you want to tackle that? You have any specific notes other than those three? Those were the main three that I heard. And of course, you know, environmental and trails and that sort of thing, too.
That's right.
I think there was a big emphasis on maintained open space in there, operation of some kind of passive recreation. The challenge is obviously that, you know, there are over two dozen private property owners, and unlike how the south of Victory was developed, which was, quite frankly, galvanized by city council at the time, and now we're talking 15 years ago, that's not happening right now. But I think the point of the retreat was to gather just thoughts, the consensus, if there was one, from planning and city council, if developed and when, what should this look like? And the takeaway, shouldn't be piecemeal, a master plan style development with an emphasis on of open space, passive recreation, a recreational facility was mentioned by members of city council, but I did not take out of that or any of our conversations since, any desire for high density residential or mixed-use ... our conversations since, any desire for high, high-density residential or mixed-use commercial per se. And, and again, that language has been eliminated and no, no action presently or even contemplated by the memo would, would change the R1, the development potential of the R1 that exists north of Victory Boulevard. It's, I believe, I think it's 97 of the 210 acres. They're large parcels owned by, I believe, many, if not the same folks that, that owned it in the late 70s, early 80s when Oakmore was developed, how it exists. It was contemplated then that the future development of parcels was low-density residential. I have it on a record plaque from 1983 where these, the two largest parcels in the rear that are accessed from Oakmore, the end of Oakmore, the stub and Abbott Lane off of Oakmore, it says future, future development, future development on both. So the low-density single-family residential development on those parcels, I'll say in the rear, that are north of the commercial parcels, that's been contemplated for decades. And, and I don't see, from the perspective of, of staff or taking away comments, we've heard from city council or planning commission already, I don't see that changing certainly in the near term. But of course, we're talking about the comprehensive plan, a guiding document for future development, and we haven't taken that away from any of the conversations that have already been had.
The comprehensive plan is currently until 2038, so it's a long-range.
Right, low range, yes.
I do have a question related to what you said. It's my understanding that if you don't keep, it's my understanding that if you don't keep the residential and the commercial that you're planning together, you could never have a residential lane going to Victory Boulevard. Is that a true statement?
I believe you could have one now, if I'm, I'm getting your question right. You could have a public road conceivably now if somebody acquired enough property on the street back to the R1 area. What we're saying is the guidance and the comprehensive plan would lay out a more systematic way to do it.
I understand what you're saying. My concern is the fact that if you take, if this is passed, and I know it's a comprehensive plan, but if it is passed, you can still, after it's passed, can you still take and put a roadway for residential through the commercial piece?
It would be possible, but you, you would have to show that there's no way to access either Yorktown or, or Oakmore or any of the existing roads.
Okay, so, okay.
But, but, but the developer would have to own those pieces of property, which, yeah, it's kind of common sense. They've got to own it. But we would only, we would only allow the roads. We would not allow any subdivision parts like open space.
I fully understand that. My concern is the fact, I don't want to get it to the point where Oakmore is a main drive going to Yorktown Road for all the development. Even if you do put another road in there, that's, that's a lot. And history dictates, and you can talk about where history is, but I can tell you, I sat on city council when the Big Woods is being developed on the south side, they said, there's so many people that own property, we will never be able to develop it. Something is wrong. Apparently you can take and develop anything if you get the right people to talk to the right people. And that's what I'm concerned with as we get in here, related to what you're considered the Big Woods North.
Next speaker I have is retired, retired Colonel Randall Neal.
Now, good speaker, and I've literally heard about this meeting probably two, three hours ago.
Well, we appreciate you being here.
I do live on Oakmore. I have seen the signs. I've also seen the flooding. I've wintered there twice. This is a GS flood map. That little finger, that's our neighborhood. Everything beyond that finger and surrounding it is the Big Woods. Let me clarify. Every winter it's covered in water. Every fall, thanks to you guys, before the floods hit, they come and they clear out our gutters. Additional housing will just funnel that water in and you'll have more flooding. It is a flood zone, so you're going to have to mitigate and you definitely need to evaluate. It's got endangered species. It's got the cockled woodpecker, cockade woodpecker. And, you know, before you move ahead, I would really ask that you do an environmental assessment and mitigation. I'm, I'm worried more because I've seen, you know, other developments recently and they, they're definitely high-density. It's not the Pecosin. I chose to come here. I'm proud to be a Pecosinite. If you, if you continue to develop, I'm worried that Pecosin will lose Pecosin. You could be another Yorktown. You could be a TAB or Hampton. And you don't want to go towards that. You're going to lose the magic. My concerns, wetlands. Are they going to be filled, damaged? Is there, there's definitely a flooding potential. How do you mitigate endangered species? Is there an environmental impact statement for those? The flood risk is big and what I just showed you is your homes are being built in the flood zones. And unlike some neighborhoods, in some neighborhoods that are in flood zones, this really floods. The other thing is evacuation, storm surge. You know, when I was active duty, we had to evacuate Langley. I'm sure you had to evacuate Pecosin. My understanding is that it's Wythe Creek and Victory. Do we have any other exits from Pecosin? I don't think so. So right now you have a bridge being built on Wythe Creek. It's not, it's not perfect and during a flood, it will flood until that bridge is complete. You have Victory. Are there plans of expanding it to four lanes? So if you did this tomorrow and there was a hurricane evacuation and you had high-density like Legacy, all right, how is your evacuation plan going to be affected? And have you looked at mitigating that and having that infrastructure in place before you ever consider expansion? Community character is huge. You have low crime. You have low crime because you only have two entrances and exits into Pecosin because most of my neighbors grew up here and their parents were here. I don't want to die here. I don't want Pecosin to die here for me. Those are the big things. I'm sure I'll have more later. This might be a dangerous question, so I'm not going to ask for an answer, but just ask yourselves, was Pecosin like, was Legacy of Pecosin something you enjoyed or liked? Do they have flood mitigation right now? Are they going to have the same neighborhood that I have? Just think about that. Thank you very much.
Hawali and Thomas, I talked about this a little bit earlier this evening, but when we talk about roadways, right past York County, VDOT owns the roadways, correct?
That's correct.
In order to expand those roadways, that would have to go through VDOT and the Commonwealth Transportation Board, correct?
Right, you're talking about over towards York County line.
Out towards York County line. So when you enter into York County, so those roadways, we don't have anything with them. We don't dictate that, that VDOT, they are, roadways owned by the Virginia Department of Transportation?
That is correct.
Okay.
We would like to think that they would cooperate with us.
Right.
Certainly, yeah, but, yeah.
Right, okay. So I just wanted to clarify that the city did not own the roadways, which I don't.
The city owns all the roads that are within jurisdiction of.
Within the city, correct, correct.
Is there, in the comprehensive plan, is there a requirement within Victory Boulevard and the four-lane highway?
The roadways are owned by VDOT in York County.
The comprehensive plan is not owned by VDOT, is it? The comprehensive plan is not owned by you.
I understand that.
Have you stepped back and said that you want to have a four-lane highway and Victory Boulevard on the, on the comprehensive plan?
Mr. Quinn, this is for you to facilitate what you would like us to know. It's not a back-and-forth type session. I'll be happy to talk with you after the meeting, but we do want to keep the meeting going. Yes, sir, that's how I take it. Would anybody else like to speak to this tonight? Seeing none, I'm going to close the audience for visitors. We're going to move to item number G on our agenda, the Planning Commission Recommendations for Review at the October 20th Meeting. Love to hear from fellow commissioners regarding this.
Hawali, I have one question. I've heard a lot of folks concerned about high-density development and rightly so, but I don't think we're talking about that at all, at all, and with anything we're proposing.
No, no, we're not. We're going to leave. I mean, R1's part of the area, but we're going to leave it low-density residential. Now, if somebody does a subdivision back there, that's, they're right as a property owner.
Right, but what is the density? Do we have a maximum R1 currently or?
Well, we do it in terms of lot sizes. And R1, I think lot size is 20,000. You've got to have like 100 feet of frontage. We require certain, you know, square footage of house on there too, which I, in a while, specifically for house size, I think it's somewhere around 1800 square feet. Yes.
Compared to the homes we see in Legacy, do you?
Well, Legacy being sort of a master plan that, that was under the, the more flexible zoning, if you will, of a, of a planning unit development, they, they don't have, they don't have that kind of frontage. In fact, most of them have significantly less. I won't say all of them, but most of them.
Requirement that we have here in Pecosin that folks are seeing develop?
Yes, there is. Depending on, on what district you're in, there is a minimum lot size and a minimum frontage requirement. Now, the one exception to that is that you can do a 50-foot access off a road in certain, what they call a flag lot. But, exception. And, and you wouldn't be able to do that just to cram in a bunch of extra lots.
So I, I think, you know, a lot of folks, you know, and what I've been hearing, and I, there's a reappearance of Legacy and I don't think that's a possibility with the elimination of the home.
Right, it's, it's not. It's not. There would not be another one like, like let's.
And to Mr. Quinn's question about the comprehensive plan incorporating a four-lane roadway into that, is that something that can be done or not?
Well, our engineer has been working with VDOT for a number of years. And the last I heard, it was going to be widened to three lane and there was going to be like a sidewalk, walkway on the side. It wasn't going to be four lane.
Like a multi-use.
But I can chase that down and get better, better.
Yes, specifically since you raised that question, I'd like to have an answer to that.
Sure.
I could follow with that, Hawali. If we did that, would that mean there would be a four-lane all development of commercial development till a four-lane road?
Well, I mean, obviously if you're building a road, it's kind of hard to do both at the one time. I, I mean, it's kind of hard to do both at one time. You know, not, not necessarily, but in, in effect, it would, it would be a bit of a moratorium. Because I mean, it'd take a certain amount of time to build that road.
Can we control that? Can we put a?
I think you take away somebody's property rights.
Yeah, I think that would be a sticky one. I think that would be a hard one to get across the goal line, yeah.
I agree. They would probably bring a lot of legal action.
Right.
Asking, but the reality of that.
The traffic, I, you know, I agree. That's one of the things that I raised at the retreat, that the roadways and traffic. And, and I, that's one of the things I shared when I was interviewed as Planning Commissioner, but, but, you know.
Related to the traffic comments, I think it is interesting because we do have a problem and it does seem like it needs to be coordinated with York County. It does a lot of good to widen things here and then everything bottled just outside of town. It also does seem like some of that's going to require some eminent domains, some other things to acquire that land to make that road. And so I think that does affect people's properties and I think it does affect any buffers that are currently in place. So I do think it's something we should be talking about now and incorporating into our plans. Whether we're able to achieve what we need to outside of York County or not, if we don't have a plan in place, it's not going to happen.
Is there a possibility of having a VDOT guest speaker?
Might be a possibility. I know, I know our city engineer could be available.
Well, I understand the whole VDOT and Victory Boulevard. I mean, that's been a plan for over 20 years. However, keeps getting pushed back because of all the other streets around us with the Orange Roadgones. They just have, keep seeming it not as important as everything else is that they're doing. That's exactly, that's what's going on. I mean, it's on their list. They know that it needs to be, all that, but it's just everything else around us has become more important. And that's a VDOT thing and that's nothing that we can do here.
I would, I would like to jump to environmental. I think, I think looking at Big Woods North and hearing some comments tonight, the concern about wetlands, preserving wetlands or, or the environmental impact of, of any type development. So the question I, I would propose would be review at the October 20th Planning Commission meeting, is that enough time to get some kind of information on really what's out in this area, in this Big Woods North, before we really get too far?
Well, it may not be enough time to do a wetlands delineation. Those things tend to take time and you're kind of at the mercy of a professional wetlands delineator. I know that the city as a whole has been looking into the area north of Victory and I'm not exactly sure where that is right now. But, but again, that's, that's another thing I'll, I'll need to chase. I, as far as environmental is concerned, you know, just to explain the process, whenever we talk to someone about a subdivision, let's just call it a subdivision, you know, one of the first questions we ask is, have you done wetlands delineation in the past five years? Because we do have a lot of wetlands, you know, in the town, in the city, as you know. Now, in some areas, you know, you can tell that they're out of the flood, you know, they're out of the wetlands. But, but most of them you really can't. You don't know exactly where that line is. So we always help them get a wetlands delineation and that's what is developable on the property. We don't allow people to go in and We don't allow people to go in and, you know, go into out of wetlands and, you know, just start hacking. We're very environmentally conscious. We have an environmental compliance officer that does a really good job for us, you know, in that regard. And, you know, and outside the wetlands, I mean, just big bay preservation. Well, and there are very strict guidelines as to what, where, you know, and within--
And what do you care to say, since, you know, when I asked about the number of acres that was privately owned, it would not be something that the city would go onto a private residential, or something that's privately owned and do a wetlands delineation on, because it's not--
No, that would be the responsibility of land that--
Correct, exactly.
In some of the comments we received in writing prior to this meeting, a lot of concern over the impact of development on the school population, and so that is a potential point for discussion in one.
It's a worthy point, and one that's been discussed at some length in the past, but not recently. But I can tell you with a pretty high degree of confidence, right now, we're, I would guess about 250 or 300 students below our peak enrollment. That was 2008, 2009, and we steadily lost student population for about 15 years. So, we are not close to the level we were then, and actually have more capacity than we had then, considering the middle school renovation, and some work done to the elementary school. And we have, had these conversations at some length with the school board and school board administration, when we looked at the middle school renovation, and especially Legacy, because, and, and the new developments generally, Bull Run Manor, Valmore, Quarter Creek, how many kids are we expecting? And to say that the, the numbers seen versus the numbers anticipated are underwhelming is an understatement. Last week, there are 33 students in the school system that live in Legacy. There are only two, I believe, that live in Bull Run Manor. I believe only nine that live in Quarter Creek. The largest development, without question, being Legacy, and two others. Quarter Creek is about 30 homes. Darden Drive is, I think, 21. We're not seeing the numbers we anticipated. The one and a half or two and a half kids a, a new home is, is out the window. No pun intended. So, I, I personally, I, I don't see a cause for concern for school capacity. And Legacy is, I mean, that basically what you see is, is occupied. That's not to say that doesn't change in the future, but people are having children later in life. A lot of the folks purchasing these homes are middle-aged or retired, or folks coming back to Pecosin that maybe did a short stint here. If they're in the military and transferred and, and came back, it's, it's not a lot of households with young children. So, I, I don't see, currently don't see the concern, our, our capacity concern, and with any major development, that of course would require a public hearing, Planning Commission Recommendations, City Council action, it would be one of those things we would definitely discuss, and you all would consider at the time, what is the anticipated number of students with the new development.
But I understand that, I understand that, sorry, but that, that was kind of the push for Legacy anyway, is because of decline in, in our public schools. Because essentially, when people move into Pecosin, they don't move out. So, there aren't-- I've been here my whole life, but the, I understand that as far as that push, even though that was kind of way before any of our time up here. But we do appreciate you all coming out very much. This, this is exactly what we were hoping for. We were hoping for open discussion and to find out what you truly want out of Pecosin. Very much the same for us.
Yes.
As far as like what to Pecosin and what we see the future being, as far as going what we have here, and it not changing beyond what it has to. Have to grow. That's just kind of the way it is, but want to grow responsibly.
Right.
And not be haphazard about it. So, that's the whole contention of us getting together tonight was everybody else's wants, not just our own, and how we want to serve you all, so.
And I would say, too, that was one of the reasons I, when we were talking about this, I'm like, "I want this on social media. I want this out here. I want to hear from the constituents, because it affects you. We are property owners. It affects us, too." But we need to hear from you all, and that's, you would be amazed on an average month, sometimes we hear from nobody, like we're just sitting here. And so, we appreciate you coming out tonight and for sending emails. You know, Wally and, and Thomas, they do a fantastic job, and even after this is over with, if you still have questions, they're always available to talk and, and walk through that. But I can tell you resoundingly, at the retreat that we had in June?
June.
June 21st.
June, that was not either council or planning commission's recommendation for anything high-density whatsoever. It wasn't. And somewhere, I'm sure that if you all would like a copy, that Mr. Neil Morgan did the presentation, and he had to put all of our stuff up there, and it was averaged out, and it was all of the planning commission. There were some members who were not there, as well as all of city council, and we all sat down and talked about it. And that was the resounding thing that we heard over and over again, we didn't want this. And with the, that's why I started the meeting with, here's what we've done. PMU is gone. That's planned development, which is what Legacy is. It's gone. It's not there anymore, and that was, we looked at that on initiation of our city council members, which was great. City council recognized that being a problem, and they asked us to look at it, and we took it on, and we passed it, and so we understand that. And I, you know, I hope that if you have questions going forward, sometimes, as you all have said and members have said, there's a lot of misinformation that gets spread out there. Call, call the community development office and ask them. They'll talk to you. Mr. Jaeger?
I, I, just looking back at, we've had four speakers tonight. We had four emails from the community, a community of 12,000 people, that's eight. I personally would like to hear, you know, to update the, I think the goal here is to update the comprehensive plan specifically for the Big Woods North.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's what our focus is. It was mentioned in the February strategic plan by city council was adopted, along with the community center possibility in that area or near there. But with that being said, I would encourage me, just personally, I would like to see more input possibly to help develop these ideas, or to get, be more open about hearing from, from our community. I, I think that's important, that we hear from more of our community. And there's a variety of avenues that that could be done, informal or formal, but I don't know if that could be a part of October 20th, or even, I don't think we're in a huge hurry here. I would be open to any ideas or to gather more community thoughts.
Yeah, I think it's more important to get it right than--
Absolutely, absolutely.
And just to make the point, when, whatever the amendments look like at the time, and if that's us taking a stab at them from hearing your comments tonight and bringing you something next month, or with the possibility of November, December, but there's a joint city council work session in that time, and inevitably, a public hearing for you all, in front of you all to consider it, and then a public hearing at city council. So, this is certainly not the, the end of the process.
Right.
But merely the beginning of, of public input. And of course, our emails are available online, as is much of your contact information as well as city council. When we receive citizen emails, we provide them to you, so insofar as people show up and participate or communicate to us, we will get that to you as fast as we can.
I don't think I have anything else. I mirror the comments about getting more input and wonder the best ways to do that, if it can be like a town hall type thing or something. I think at a different time, it's not on Monday night for people who just can't make surveys. We've done those. We talked about those. I'm not sure if that's a possibility, but I think input is good, to hear from everyone and get feedback, and like, I think it was Commissioner Jaeger just said, "We're not in a hurry here. We're really trying to get it right, not trying to get this done." So, it's just the beginning of the process. Action items for--
There was no action, other than clarity for staff as to which way to proceed.